We do, I didn't print it. Do you have anything with you?
I do.
I think it's just the same basic thing about
That's fine.
Approve the agenda. Well, I was just going to approve the agenda, but I didn't have one to approve. Alright, I call this June 28th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? The only item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan 2035 update. All in favor? Alright. Start the meeting.
Alrighty, I'm going to do a combination of standing and sitting. Kind of depends on how long we go, what we're doing. I'm going to need to walk around and kind of have my arms moving my face as well. So, this evening, we have two main things to cover. The first thing is to review the goals, policies, strategies, which is what I emailed everybody at 40-page document. You know it all to you last week. We're going to talk about that. And we're also going to talk about the future land use map. And you'll see some maps kind of sitting around the room. We reviewed every element over a period of 10 months. You all have heard about it. Most, I think, most were on the commission. There are some new people that haven't heard this or anything. And so, we got your comments. We gave you updates of where we were with the progress of those elements. We took it back as staff. We made amendments to it based upon things that were completed, things that RECODE took care of, and any new council directions. So, we've made changes to that. And so, this evening, we're going to go over those changes. And we're not going to go word for word. We're going to give you some highlights. A lot of this stuff really was just reorganizing things, a lot of wordsmithing, just changing them, maybe some updates. But for the most part, there wasn't drastically new stuff in there. But it just flowed better. And then, we'll talk about the future land use amendment. And we're proposing some changes. On the left over here is existing map. On the right will be the updated one. It's still in draft mode. We're still working through that, but there are some changes to that. And the updates are reflecting, talking about any kind of annexations. And so, you'll see some municipal infill. That's going to be changing. And then, new trends, new development issues, and things that we've encountered as we've gone through the rezoning process that maybe an amendment to the comprehensive plan might serve us well and serve council and the community as well. So, those are the main things. So, I'm just going to go over each individual element. Like I said, I don't want to go over everything because that's just too much. But what I've done here is I've listed, these are the, like, in each element, they have goals. So, the numbered items here are the four. And I kind of paraphrase it a little bit as opposed to typing everything out there. But those are the four goals. The little arrows next to that are things that have changed. Things that I've pulled out that I felt that were, let's talk about that. And we make that to pincer your attention. But if anything that you've read or that you have questions on, please stop me. And we can kind of talk about them through those things. And like I said, a lot of the things that we've added are things to be able to help the comprehensive plan function better, help rezonings function better, and then also support some of the goals that we have here. So, the first one here was directing to go up onto areas where we have adequate utilities. So, we added some language here that helps us to support transit. We've heard that over the past few years about considering transit, how we're going to get transit. If we ever want to have transit, we have to be able to have the land uses to be able to support that. So, we've added some text to be able to encourage that. Once again, remember, this is a plan, not a code. These are all policies and strategies. This is, there's no power within this document. The power is in rezoning ordinance and RECODE. So, these are all things to kind of help us direct the council where the county wants to go. And a balance, these mixture of uses. One thing we've added, and we'll talk about this when we get to the actual map, is transitional areas. And these are areas where, let's say it's a highly traveled road, and there's people that are living there, there's some houses along that. And they want to possibly redevelop that parcel. And so, we need to figure out how to be able to manage that, how to be able to handle those as they get redeveloped. And so, we're bringing in a new concept called transitional areas. And we'll talk about that more once we get to the map. We've added language to be able to support conditions. So, we get, frequently, we get rezonings. And we'll have an added condition to it as well. And we wanted to be able to go back to the comprehensive plan that supports that staff's request or councils or planning request to add conditions. So, we've added some language to be able to support that, adding conditions to rezonings. To consider expanding Lake Wiley design guidelines outside of just the Lake Wiley area. Perhaps, once we get going, see how this is working in Lake Wiley. Maybe we consider other urbanized areas to be counted. And then, we added language to provide the criteria from rezoning to AGC to RUD. We get those a lot, AGC, RUDs. They don't, many times, agree with the comprehensive land use plan map. But they might agree with the development pattern of the area, other reasons why they do it. So, we're adding some language to help support those rezoning requests. That's the land use section. Any, in your readings or questions you've had, what that is or how that works? Let me go on to the next.
Good, so far.
Alrighty. The housing element is to ensure diversity of housing types. For the past couple of budget cycles, we have requested a housing study because in order for us to know where we need to go, we need to know where we're at anymore. And so, we're hoping, we're continuing to request that within our budget to be able to have funding for a housing study. And so, we'll continue to do that. Ensure housing is located to maximize efficiency of existing resources. And that's to support infill housing. And that's kind of also, the transitional area will help support that is to where you have trans, hold on, will we get one thought?
I've got one on number one.
Okay, we'll go back to that one. Where you have some development already occurred, and you have some vacant land. Maybe the best use of the utilities that are already there is infill housing to be able to utilize those parcels.
Okay, so I know, when you talk about a housing study, you mean a third party that's looking at actual market prices?
It would be a consultant. We would hire somebody to do it. And they would be looking at housing prices affordability. They would be looking at maybe types of housing, understanding where the market is going and where there's some deficiencies. Where we might have too much in certain types, not enough in another. So, it's a combination of both location, price points, types throughout the county.
Okay.
So, yeah, we would hire somebody else to do that for it.
And take apartments and rent rates, all that into consideration?
Yeah, and the scope would have to determine is how, whether we do it, kind of to figure out what our needs are. And then, we would define that scope for that. But it's kind of hard to know where we need to be if you don't know where we are.
I understand.
And kind of need to know that. And there is still a demand for housing. We need to figure out what type, where, that kind of thing.
Well, and I was thinking, you know, could you use property values for that? But when you get into something like an apartment complex, it's difficult to do that because that's value of the property, not necessarily what people are having to pay to live there, right?
Yeah, and then, it kind of gives more than just the market part of it as well. So, yeah, I mean, we can easily figure out in our staff, you know, the housing values and everything. Census data can help us with that as well. But just trying to figure out what the long-term needs for the county has for this kind of housing. We go on number three. Yeah, to consider programs to be addressing housing conditions. You may have heard in a recent council meeting about the mobile home park. I'm just discussing about, you know, housing conditions. We don't really have a program for that right now. So, trying to figure out ways to be able to consider that. And then, to work with nonprofits to find plans for affordable housing. Once again, these are all things that we would consider, you know, for the next five, 10 years. Transportation. When I was putting this together, I was like, wow, a lot of it really was just moving things around, updating stuff, changing some language because I think our current element right now is really well done. So, there wasn't a whole lot of changes that we were going to do from this one. But I wanted to bring a couple, attention to a couple of things here. And that was the bike and ped part. Now, the current plan has the bike and ped sort of scattered throughout that section. We wanted to really focus on that. And so, therefore, we made it its own separate goal. And then, brought everything together into that one, that one goal. And the other one I thought was important on here was the access management. Is to really push that, RECODE made some changes. They made some additional requirements. And really making sure that we're doing everything we possibly can for access management. Now, for those folks who don't know what that is.
Thank you.
So, that's to be able to manage access. And we're talking about access to roads. So, for instance, if you have a development that has, maybe it's a commercial project, and as it is right now, it's curb cut, curb cut, curb cut. Well, what we need to do now, and RECODE requires this, is if you're building here, and there's a vacant property over here, you're going to build a stub to that property right there. So, eventually, you all can share one access point there. That's one way to be able to do that. And any kind of stubout opportunity is to be able to manage that flow to minimize the access points, multiple access points onto a boardwalk. And so, like I said, RECODE added some requirements for that. And we want to make sure we can maybe go even further if we need to. Any questions in this sort of transportation part?
So, the PED network, does that pedestrian?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah, pedestrian, bike and ped. Economic development. Now, for this one, we reached out with our folks who actually do this, the folks over in our development office. And they, we did multiple reviews, multiple phone calls and meetings to make sure that we are lining up with what we're doing, with what they're doing. And so, they gave us a lot of information, a lot of feedback and advice. From this one here, something new is the opportunity zones. You may have heard of those. It's a federal program is to emphasize that and help to support those opportunity zones. And the other one here is called the Bailey Bill. And so, right now, the town of Fort Mill has that Bailey Bill program. And what that is, it allows them to be able to, it encourages folks to redevelop historic or older properties by freezing the value of their tax property bill before they develop it. They can then go ahead and make all these improvements. But for numbers of years, their property value taxes is still where it was originally. And so, to be able to expand that outside of just the town of Fort Mill and maybe include the county portion of it as well. Right now, they're only freezing the town's value of it, but maybe the county could as well. And that would kind of help encourage folks to redevelop and rehab older, poorer properties.
So, is that currently a Fort Mill ordinance then?
It is.
Okay, that, when you, so that's why it's restricted to that one now?
There is language, I believe, in ours to support theirs. But we want to make it go even further to do the county portion of it as well.
How many, so does that stay in place for like a number of years?
It does, and I don't remember the numbers. I think it's 20, but I can't for certain whether it is. But I think it's 20 years that they freeze that value on. Yeah, and like, if you're in Fort Mill, they use the Bailey Bill for Center Theater, which is now Emmett's, use that. Moore Arties, they use it for theirs as well. And that kind of helps for the developer to be able to afford to re-rehab those buildings by utilizing that program.
So, it's kind of like a limited FLO?
Yeah, but it's really to help encourage that small business.
I understand.
So, kind of like the FLOs, the big folks, these are small folks.
Yeah, that's right. This is a small, light FLO is what it is. Because you're setting that limit and not changing.
Exactly.
I have saving historical.
Yeah, it's pretty has in older buildings as well. So, you have that component as well. So, you'd be able to maintain that. So, a lot of the downtown, this is really good for them as well.
So, you want to expand this so where the residents can benefit from it, or is what that's?
I don't know if Bailey goes outside of the commercial property, to be honest with you. I'd have to see whether or not it goes to that. There are other state period, department, department period programs for those sorts of things too. I'm not sure whether it goes beyond that.
I'm sure you're going to get to it, but does the opportunity zone, does that overlay with the map?
They are mostly in the city of Rock Hill. So, I believe those are where they're located. So, it's mainly their program, but we're going to help, we'll support that. But I think for the most part, all those located in the city of Rock Hill. I think we have just a couple.
Opportunity zones are demographic based, right?
Yes. Their demographics, their property value, their, yeah. And it's a federal program to establish those areas.
I think it's only so many in South Carolina that's designated.
I'm sorry?
I think there's only so many in South Carolina that's designated opportunity zone.
Yeah, I don't know whether it is from the
I think, wasn't there four here?
I thought there was only two in Rock Hill.
Maybe.
So, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not sure.
You're right.
So, all of downtown is, I know for sure.
Yeah, it's a good chunk of downtown, yes, yeah.
Wasn't the other part downtown, Saluda?
Yeah, Saluda, Albright, parts of Anderson Road, I believe.
Trying to think, I wanted to highlight on this one as well here. Oh, we continue to try to focus to reduce the tax burden. One thing that we don't have a lot of control over here, but our legislature does, is to be able to balance out our taxes to make it equal and more competitive with those outside of the county. I think there was a big change recently. We did raise the taxes significantly for, let's do South Carolina. Not any questions, I may go to the next one. Community facilities. As you can see, this was pretty much the entire thing, was just worth it. There was nothing really new, nothing groundbreaking. This was just talking about, we pretty much for this one here is we are very supportive of the land uses and other departments, other agencies. And so, we will continue to be able to provide you with information. But there were really no big changes on, within that element. Natural resources. For this one, we actually moved, this only has now has two goals because we moved the stormwater management over to resiliency. So, this kind of shortens up this goal here itself, just the two ones. Number two, it's evolving as the county gets more involved with Park and Rec. In the previous comprehensive plan, a recommendation was to establish a Park and Rec department. We got that going. So, but that's going to start growing and moving. And so, we're going to help support that. One thing that we're calling for is to work with the Park and Rec Department to be able to do a park study to figure out what our needs are. And so, the planning department can help out with that, with the department department.
Real quick on that, just how does parks and rec fit into zoning? So, in other words, are there classes of zoning that if somebody wanted to say, okay, I'm going to donate my property, and you guys can turn it into a park, and I could say, well, wait that zone, no, we can't do that?
Well, RECODE established a new district called Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation. And it's for county projects. And so, if the county has, our intention is to, over the next some numbers of months, to go back in there and rezone any county property to this new PR district. And that will be for the county ones. Now, there are areas where we do have
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my multicolored cheat sheets out. So, I don't have all those little in front of me to keep track of.
We also have a thing called outdoor recreation and indoor recreation. And those are commercial projects. And so, for outdoor, it would be if you had RUD, AGC can do outdoor. But if you become an indoor recreation, then you're going to move to the commercial side of that. And so, if it's just county, it's PR. If it's commercial, it's either RUD or commercial relevant.
I see, okay. A lot of moving parts.
Culture resources. So, for this one, once again, RECODE took care of quite a few things. And we expanded that scenic overlay, which is really good to be able to achieve that and take off a few things off of the list where we gave it some more power for that overlay. We reduced the area a little bit to just have 500, 500 feet from where they are. We added a couple of different parks to it as well. Cataba Bend was added to it. The Broad River was added to it. And so, we did some changes already for that one. And then, also, there's language in there. We have a scenic byway corridor management plan that we really don't do a whole lot with. And so, hopefully, maybe when we get this done, we can start looking at, maybe working on that and working towards beefing that up and doing some. And we have a lot of goals in that one and work on that one. And then, we're also working to be able to use our GIA database to be able to map where all our stored properties are. So, we can know where they are when people come in to do something. We'll know if it's near a stored property already.
One more along this. So, scenic overlay, does that cover multiple zoning types?
It's an overlay over any parcel, whether, no matter what the zoning is.
Okay.
And so, what that is, is 500 feet from Kings Mountain State Park, Anne Springs Close, Brattonsville, Cataba Bend Park, Broad River, Cataba River. I'm missing one.
Crowe's Mountain?
Yeah, I think it's in Kinston County.
It doesn't come down at all. And I'm up there all the time, I have no idea if it crossed over.
Can you think of the last one? I can't think of the last one yet. And so, that's 500 feet from the partial line of that.
Draper?
What's that?
Draper?
Draper's part of Brattonsville. We include it together, those two together.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so it just defines some, how this should look 500 feet?
It prohibits certain things you can't do. It reduces the height of certain building. I think it's 35 feet, I think is what it is for that. You cannot do mobile homes in there. And there's probably a few more things that we added that I'm forgetting, John, if you might.
You can't put in a cell tower.
Cell towers, yeah. Originally, before we did RECODE, all it said is you could do a single white mobile home. So, we've kind of expanded that to make it actually worthwhile. And then, we brought it in
And it's a separate thing from parks and rec?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. It can go over any zoning district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
A little hash mark over the whole thing. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Resiliency. This is the new one. So, there was legislation that was done a couple of years ago. And that was to require counties to include resiliency in their comprehensive plan. So, we are, this is all new, so we can't say whether we changed it or not. This is all new. And what this is doing is to be able to have the county be able to monitor, react, deal with any kind of natural event, any kind of hazardous materials, waste, or hazardous things blowing up essentially. It came pretty much out of the coast. That was really a big push for them. They have a lot of climate change issues, and they have, and so, they have that resiliency going. The biggest thing that we have here is floods. So, we brought over the stormwater management section from that was in natural resources over to here to really address that. But what this is, is we have an officer of emergency management, the center. And so, we coordinate with them. They're doing their plan right now for their hazard mitigation. So, we're working with them to make sure they are coordinated with the planning and officer of emergency management. A big program that we have here with the, I didn't put it on that list there, but we're working to be able to, we, and I'll probably miss this one, we map floodplains. And so, we do certain things to be able to improve the floodplains. And by doing so, help reduce insurance. And so, every number, probably two years, we have to go back in there and report them. It's either two years or more, hopefully, we have to update that. And by maintaining that and doing certain things, one thing is if we expand our open space. So, as your county forever preserves property, that kind of helps to reduce the amount of areas that can be, like, damage of home and property because of floods, we get points for that. So, we're doing things to be able to improve our floodplain to be able to help with the floodplain insurance. So, that's that 40-page document. 20 minutes. It's a lot of stuff in there. Like I've said over and over, it really is just a lot of wordsmithing. It makes more, makes more sense. It's good to get some new eyes looking at it, making sure we're thinking things up. If you're moving a few things, as we've accomplished some tasks, and then, a few new things as well as we go forward. Now, for the fun part. As part of the program process, because we're also going to update the comprehensive plan, land use map. Everyone likes the map. So, as I said, over here is the existing one, and there's the changes. So, there's about four, like, four major changes that we were looking at with this map. The first one was the agricultural to rural residential. And like I mentioned, it's kind of to reflect the issues we've had with, for rezonings that come forward where it's already in an area that has already been partialized. It was never some kind of farm. And therefore, perhaps it'd be okay to go ahead and rezone that or make those to rural RUD. And so, we're changing a few of those. Change over here. If you see on the map right here, so this is all, this is the agricultural district here for designation. The light one here is rural residential, and the yellow here, single family. There are some areas where the agricultural touches the single family. And one of our goals was to put a little bit of a buffer to make a transition from the agricultural to rural residential to single family. So, that's in a few places within the area here. Down here, and I've got maps to kind of zoom in to show you what we're talking about. Over here is city of Rock Hill, this gray area here, it goes right from the farm to the city. So, we think it'd be a very good idea to kind of add some buffer here to transition from the agricultural to the more urbanizing area. We also wanted to be able to look at some, what we call islands. There's some of these, these green spaces right here that we wondered, this, why are they there? Is that inappropriate one? Should we consider doing something different by looking, just looking at these? Because you already have, you know, growing area here, you've got clover, Lake Wiley area here. Are these farms, what's going on? So, we're looking at these as well. And then, also to look about where you can have corridors to be able to have some growth. So, I'll look at that map over here. Some areas where it's already starting to grow. And these are some transition roads right here. Maybe we can go ahead and include something over there as well. So, that's the one.
What is that little horseshoe piece there?
This is part of Dave's Road, McConnell's, and then Chester Highway kind of comes up this way here. Kind of goes up that way. And we'll zoom in here in a minute.
When you say buffer, that's for zoning, what, you know, what would that, what would that look like?
RUD.
Okay.
Yeah. So, right now, if somebody was to come in and the comprehensive plan says agricultural, we're looking for AGC district. If we make it rural residential, we can go to RUD and support that. So, it's kind of like that transition from agricultural, rural residential, single family, neighborhood residential. As you move closer and in, it's just the more intensity, more density as you go from one to the other.
It's a, yeah, it's an intermediate density piece that you could have less than, more than one per acre.
Yeah, the AGC is going to be your five acres and greater. And then, RUD is the one acre. And so, it just kind of has that little transition area sort of between the two. The uses are going to be the same. So, you can do, you know, all your agricultural and livestock uses depending on AGC as you can on RUD. So, you have that. But you see the parcel size can go on. And maybe somebody has a piece of property, and a lot of that, there already is some RUD around that. And they want to go ahead and, you know, build a road and put in four or five single-family houses on an acre. Kind of goes from the farming area to the more denser developments.
Without it just being farming and apartment complex?
Yeah, and you can have that in-between stuff. It's got to kind of gradually go from one to the other. Residential, we didn't do a whole lot of changes there. There were a couple areas where we went from Sincom Residential, Navy Residential, which is going lower density to a little bit, to medium density. And then, some that went the other way as well. We felt it was a little bit too dense here. Let's go ahead and bring that back down, make a single family residential. So, there's a little bit of changes in those two. For industrial, we've added a new category called the Regional Employment Center. And the purpose of that designation is to be able to line it up with our new Business Technology Special District and to identify a couple of areas where we think that could actually, could work as well. But that was to kind of align with that, that new zoning district. And then, currently, the industrial is focused on new Indy, Cataba plants, and then, a couple of electric plants through here, some Duke and some electric properties. We wanted to expand that. There are some properties that are already zoned ID. And so, take that industrial and maybe have a little bit more than, instead of just having those those larger ones as well. So, we're going to expand that to a few more parcels. And then, for the infill, and that's pretty much as Rock Hill and Fort Mill and TDK as a annexed property, it's these donut holes. And so, when you have that donut hole, we pretty much refer to or consult the municipality's land use plan. And so, just, we've gone through in areas where they have annexed, we've changed those things over to municipal infill to reflect those annexations.
So, real quick, if we are in one of these new buffer zones we're discussing, and that then becomes part of the city, we've lost that buffer zone because then they could, they could zone that more intensely if they wanted to, once it's annexed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, when they annex, they can do whatever they want to do. They can, they can establish wherever it's our district, they would work for their, for them. The buffer zones are pretty much more on the outskirts of the city.
The outskirts is growing, that's why, that's why I'm talking to you about that.
The inside here, that's the municipal infill, is the little donut holes throughout the city itself, right here.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm thinking more about what you taught, and maybe I've gone back too many slides in my head just thinking about this. But I think the idea of that buffer is a good idea. I don't know how we, we have no power to maintain that as the city's annexed.
No, as soon as they annex, it's theirs. I will say though, I saw in a recent Rock Hill's agenda I will say though, I saw in a recent, uh, Rock Hill's agenda, that they have established a new, are looking to establish a new zoning district called, I think it's even called Rural Residential, or something.
It's an agricultural thing, and I have some background on that. If I look down in this corner where they've been annexing near Porter Road and whatnot, a lot of the residents out there, that, that's my part of the county.
Right, right.
A lot of the folks out there are worried that they're going to get annexed and then they can't have their animals anymore.
Ah, yeah.
Because now they, now they're in the city limits. There's no zoning for them to have the farm they've had in their, in their family for whatever years, and the way the annexation rules are written at the state level, doesn't have to be a hundred percent agreement. You, you get seventy-five percent of the landowners with seventy-five percent of the value of the land, right? So, you could have people that get sucked into the city that don't want to be in the city, and so, there's been an effort made to, okay, if we can't stop you from forcing us in the city, at least.
Work with us and do it.
Give us something that'll let us maintain somewhat what we have out here, right? I mean, we, we go out on our front porch and we do target shooting from our front porch. Well, once we're in the city, city limit regulation says, we can't do that anymore. So, give us some zoning that lets us be able to be in that in-between. But what, what happens is, is they've, they've gone out Porter Road, they're going out, um, nine-on-one now for the new school that's going to be out there. And so, anytime anybody attaches to the utility, the first thing you have to do is sign away and say you'll be annexed whenever they choose to annex you. As a, as a condition of getting your utility service is what they're doing.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good idea to have that, that district, because that, like you said, because people are being picked up that really weren't part of that, and weren't going to be developing, but this, but their districts don't fit them. And so, this will be able to help those, you know, in-between parcels to be able to
And to the extent they do that, that could maintain the buffer that we're talking about tonight, right? If they do that.
If they hope that same district, yeah.
Right.
Absolutely. Okay. So, we're gonna, we're gonna zoom in here. So, this is, this, looking, I'm sharing, over here on the map. And a lot of this already here is already zoned R U D. So, you might wonder why would we want to make that? There are some parcels here that have already been, you know, they've been subdivided, or they've gotten smaller here, and there's still some opportunity for some development. But a lot of this, this was already zoned R U D here. So, we just kind of thought, let's go ahead and make those two aligned, um, to allow for some potential development if they wanted to, here, put in a road, maybe put in a few houses kind of thing. Um, but like I said, they've already been parcelized out, and so, that was the, that was the purpose for that one right there.
Can, can you clarify for me, that's, so that line, is that the town limit?
Town limits is this, is this right here.
Is the square?
Is the square and probably a little bit of annexation around here as well.
And so, the larger...
So, this is, area here that's a hatch, is going from...
The free draw line outside is what you're saying, all of that would be R U D?
Right, yeah. Well, rural residential, so we're not changing the district, we're just going to be counting the designation.
Okay.
So, we're just going to make everything within here, which is right now, in here, this green color is going to be the light green color for rural residential in that section over there. So, it's right here, right now, it's right here. And that's showing us being agricultural.
Okay.
So, that's one of the areas there.
So, when you, when you're doing these comp plan, map changes, a lot of it, you want to, you know, show designations of what you want the area to aspire to in the future, but if you're not looking for specific changes, the map should only show what's already there or is likely to already be there. So, that's this type of change, right?
And we don't do it one for one. There will be some properties that are still zoned R U D, but we don't want to have little tiny pieces of it. It may, has to make some kind of sense. That's why I try to, you know, bring in an area here to give it some, some focus to where these areas here maybe wanted to come in and develop, they could.
And what is the darker green to the right of that?
This is conservation.
Okay.
So, this is, all this dark, dark green here are properties that have been conserved for York County forever. And so, there's a big chunk of property in here that was conserved recently, so that's that darker, darker green, and that will never develop, as, conserve permanently.
Is that part of rec possibly in the future or not?
No, these are private properties. So, they'll just keep it as probably A G C or R U D, whatever they happen to have. This conservation isn't on there, in perpetuity, it will never get developed. So, it's...
Trying to get all the jigsaw puzzles pieces together.
Yep, that's the dark green, all the dark green colors through there.
Especially all that have been here for a while. I feel like sometimes when we're talking about this stuff, I have three different jigsaw puzzles I'm trying to put together at the same time, and they all have the same color pieces on them, and I'm getting them in the wrong spots, because I'm working on this one, but it should go over here on this one, right? Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, this one is this parcel right over here. So, as you can see, right now, it's, it's agricultural bumping up against single family residential. So, we wanted to make that transition area between the A G C, or agricultural, to rural residential, to the single family. So, that's this area right through here. Couple of pieces over here, we just want to have it cleaned up, all these parcels that are around the area that's been conserved, and just go ahead and clean up all that there as well.
So, all of that will become the lighter shaded green that is on the...
So, it'll match the one that's like right above it?
That right there, okay.
Yep, so that right there?
Gotcha.
This will continue on, all through there.
I'm with you, yep.
It'll be all that lighter colored green.
Okay.
And that lighter colored green then provides that transition from that to the yellow, which is the next step down. Kind of moves that from darker green over. And then, right over here, we're at York.
At Sierra Road, that one?
Sutton Springs, um, I'm not too sure where Sierra is, to be honest. I don't know, it might be on this map. I don't, it's, I don't have it on there.
I think it is, I'm just trying to...
Well, this road is here, maybe? That's Sutton Springs.
No, the one on the far, no, the next one over.
Left or east or west?
Left of you.
This.
Yeah, that one, I think that's it.
I think that might be. As you can see, this is, a lot of it's already been subdivided out all the way through here anyway. Um, some smaller, not smaller, but relatively smaller to whether it was here. But there's still some large lots, and so, you know, we didn't want to just sort of like carve out and move these things around, it's more of a fluid line through here. And so, if this person wanted to come in here, maybe they had a nice piece of property here, build a road, and put some houses on there.
And the people who are, so right now, the zoning designation is A G C, people who are currently living there, when it gets switched over, do they get any say in it, or is this something that's...
We don't change the zoning districts. This is just the map, the future Wendy's map. So, that means if they wanted to come in and do something, they would be able to support it by this change here.
So, that's, that's when y'all's recommendation would say this is supported by the land use map?
This is comprehensive plan, not rezoning?
Yes, yes. We do not change anybody's zoning whatsoever through this process.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
I'm starting to get it now.
This is just to kind of help them support if they wanted to develop.
Close, it's Mission Road.
Oh, okay, I don't know Mission Road at all.
This is the thing where you say, this supports comprehensive plan, or it doesn't.
Exactly.
We're going to go to the other side, okay? I'm starting to know there's some pieces falling into place, okay?
Put that puzzle piece in there.
We've all been there.
Holy mackerel.
This one's kind of unusual. This is the, over here, this part of the map. And what that, this is, uh, three twenty-one, that goes up through here, this is McConnell's that goes this way here, and this is Dave's Road that goes here. As you can see, these are all little lots, all through here. It's been subdivided and parceled, so it just felt to go ahead and reflect this corridor here on three twenty-one, that somebody might want to come in and do something, or McConnell's, and then capture the ones over here. So, we have that. Now, I considered, you know, what about this, why have that gap there? And there's still some large parcels through here that I just didn't feel as though it necessary to go ahead and do that. So, we've left this centerpiece here for now, and just kind of deal with it as that. And just focus more, like I said, on these corridors here to kind of collect those, if folks might come in here and build something off of these roads here.
And you're not concerned about the island, like you were up around the Clover area, creating another one of those?
Not, not yet. You know, we do this every five years, so we might see, this might kind of, if this starts to grow, we're seeing some pressure over here, we might consider that again at that point. But I think at this point, wasn't quite ready yet to kind of close that, close that gap yet. But, you know, we, it's up for discussion, we can consider it more. This is our first draft.
My concern is just that that would then create pressure on those large, larger pieces as you start developing on both sides of it, you're going to start seeing that squeeze.
It might, it might, it might, you know. But once, once again, if they were to come in here with this large piece of property for rezoning, we may not recommend rezoning it because the fact it is a large piece of property that could be used for farming. Whereas, we might support something that's smaller along here, we would support that, but we would not recommend for maybe something for here, with larger ones.
Does, and by doing that, that means that it could be any of the R U D categories, right?
Just two, R U D, R U D one.
Okay. Again, okay, what's the ones that go ten, twenty, thirty, forty now?
Those are the, um, R M X.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's not even, that's...
That's not this?
Not this.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, not this, not this, not here. Yep. All right. Sticking to our, um, A G C to our agricultural to residential areas. This is the section over here that's just south of Rock Hill, here's Saluda Road, as I can see, that comes this way here. And, um, once again, Rock Hill is moved through here, and so, we wanted to be able to have a transition that goes from the agricultural, rural residential, into the City of Rock Hill. So, it's to kind of create that sort of transition through here. And then, there's a lot of property coming along seventy-two that's already been developed, and so, there might be a few larger lots in here that's supportive of, go ahead and, if they came in for rezoning, they could. And some of this might already be R U D zoned through here as well.
So, kind of the question you were, what would you be able to do either? So, so in other words, you'd, you'd want to change this from agricultural to R U D on the plan, right?
The plan is going from agricultural to rural residential.
Okay.
So, you're going from these words here, agricultural to rural residential. So, if they came in for rezoning, it'd be going to A G C to R U D, it would be the assumption.
Okay, right. And so, because it's rural residential, there's nothing to keep anybody from staying A G C if they want to?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Oh my God, I should have brought my money.
Yeah, yeah, there's, this is not forcing anybody to do anything.
Okay.
This is providing an opportunity if somebody wants to do something.
Okay. The road map.
Yeah.
So, somebody could decide to sell their hundred-acre farm, and have a stay, a hundred-acre farm is A G C and, and no harm to foul.
Absolutely.
But if somebody bought that hundred-acre farm and said, hey, I'd like to put some houses out here, this would give them the opportunity to do that.
Right, right.
Okay.
And I would hope though, the hundred-acre farm is here and not here. So, if, if the farm, if the farm is here, we would probably support that. If the farm is out here, we would not.
Right.
So, this would allow for some of these larger developments here, if they wanted to go into rural residential, which is one-acre lots. This, this would support if they wanted to get that rezoned.
Okay. I can understand. I'm still, my mind is keeping, what keeps firm between the plan and the zoning, and I'm going to have to keep correcting that what you're saying is this is if somebody is what you're doing.
This is provides an opportunity if they want it. If they don't want it, we'll never, we'll never do anything, they just do whatever they want to do, leave it as it is. But we want to be able to show some areas where we could have some potential growth.
All right, so then, the final question is, the little, the little strip, I'm assuming the end of the county is down at the bottom of the page.
It is.
So, why the, why did it stop?
I just stopped it there.
Okay.
There was a road that kind of came through here, and it just felt like that was the end. And, you know, maybe in, in five to ten years from now, we'll just continue on and we'll move it out some, we'll see where it goes. Uh, but I just felt like this road here provided a stopping point, which is not quite...
Trying to remember, because I think just below Straight Road off of, am I looking at that right? No, I, okay, never mind.
And see, there's a few over here, this is probably R U D, and I just, just didn't want to gather, I want to keep this focus on here, is along this road here, let those folks here possibly develop.
Okay.
But still maintain a lot of this, because there's a lot of straight, a lot of farms in through here and everything.
Well, and, and what about, what's the trade-off between, you know, to go into that left-hand corner where you've got...
Do you know here?
Further down, where you've got, you've got a lot of little parcels there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, to the extent you develop something there, you then have to come back out to the main road versus something being developed right on the main road, right? Where, where's the...
Well, it's, it's that incremental changes, and so, we'll just go a little further out, a little further out. We're not going to go way out. So, it, just a little bit of there to say, you know...
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm thinking back to the access point thing that you talked about before, right? So, if people started putting all kinds of little developments up both sides of that, you'd have a lot of access points right there on the main seventy-two, right? Whereas, if they do it further off of the main road, then the access points are on feeder roads that eventually get back. So...
Yeah.
How did... Okay. I'm probably getting way in the weeds here, folks, I'll shut up for a bit.
So, one concern that I have is just that the A G C continues to shrink, and I know the county's developing, and I know all of that. So, is there a point at which the county says, okay, we really need to keep what's A G C, A G C at this point?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be a long, long way from now that we'll be at that point where it becomes where it's, if ever, if it ever gets to the point where there's just like nothing left. I think it's a long time, hopefully, if it seems like it's going that way, we push back. But like I said, I, I just, there's still a lot of land that's, you know, out this way and still being farmed. So, I think we're, like I said, it's incremental, so if you kind of look here, it's a little space there, a little space there, you know, just kind of on the edges, just moving it out. But I get your point though, you know, what's to say? You know, it'll just kind of moving over here, you know, someday, it's decades before we get to that point. So, we're going to leave this part of the county, and we're going to go over to here. And this is, uh, here's Clover, three twenty-one, and once again, there's a section over here where, right now, it's all this green, and it goes from the green agricultural to single family, and we wanted to have some kind of area here to transition, and so, we've identified some area through here. It already is rural residential, all this light green over here, just to kind of go ahead and fill some of that in, fill this in here, and then go ahead and have that area here as a transition that goes from the agricultural to the single family. And it's, like I said, it's this area right through here. A lot of it already has been developed, you can see all through here. There are still some larger tracts that could potentially come in for, um, for one-acre lots to develop, you know, build a road, put in some houses, one-acre lots. It would still be considered rural residential.
I, I said I was going to shut up, but I got one more. In, in all of these changes we've done, how many of these places actually have the utilities they need to get there today?
Well, so far, we're still at rural residential. We don't need utilities. All we need is roads.
Understood, but I'm saying, if you're trying to go more dense, or you're saying, no, you can't more, go more dense than one acre rural R U D, right?
Exactly, R U D is one acre and that's it. So, you'll still be on well accepted, we haven't got to where you'd actually have utilities. And so, at this point, we're just making some incremental changes to be able to allow some amount of one-acre lot growth in these areas here.
Cool.
But no utilities yet.
So, once you, once you go past R U D, you start getting into R M X, I'm assuming?
You're going to go to R S F and then R M X. So, that's...[1635.52]
So RSF is when you need utilities?
Typically, because you're going to go to 30,000 square foot lot or 40,000 square foot lot. So yeah, you're going to, you're going to need that. I've seen some done at a half acre, but for the most part, if you get less than an acre, you're going to need to have it.
What's an acre, 42?
43, 560.
43, okay. So it's just, RSF 40 is just barely under.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
This area here is right in there. So here's Highway 49, that goes up to Lake Wiley, goes down over here to York, Shiloh Road. And this section in here, once again, it's this green section right here. And in between two rural residentials with blocks that have already been created through here, probably already zoned RUD.
Isn't a lot of that Old York Farms?
Old York Farms? Like a farm you mean, or?
No, like that's the name of subdivision.
Oh, oh, I don't know, to be honest.
Okay, so that one's kind of a knowledge right there.
Yeah.
I recognize the Davis Farm thing too.
So yeah, like I said, we already have it all around it, just go ahead and continue that through there. That's, I think that's the purpose of this one. Okay. This one we're going to focus on here, here first. And this is St. Paul Church Road that goes down here to Lincoln Road. And this is this green section right here. And when we first looked at it, we looked and said, let's just make this whole thing rural residential. But then we stepped back a little bit and said, well, you know what, there's, there's still some farms along here, it's Param Road. There's still some stuff here that we want to go ahead and leave, because there's some active farming through here. So we pulled it back, and we're just focusing on the St. Paul Church Road here, that area there. And to allow that to be able to develop if it wanted to into rural residential through here. But to leave this area here where there was still some active farming going on, leave that alone.
Isn't there a lot of active farming on that lower half of St. Paul Church Road?
Over here? There was, it's here, and there may have been one or two through here. But that was, but it was on the road, so it just felt was like, well, this is the road here, maybe go ahead and allow that to be able to develop here. But I think there is a farm right there. A piece of property. I know there are some down here, I know there's farms here. There's something here, I think it's just, I think the guy has horses. That's all they had there. It wasn't, I didn't see anything else through there. So we're going to go to some, a little bit other districts as well at this point here. So here we have a town of Clover. And there are a couple of parcels over here and here that are currently neighborhood residential. And we're recommending we go to single family residential to kind of match that and to match that. So we're dropping that density down a little bit for these parcels right here. That the neighborhood residential should be more closer to the town and have that match up with that. And that match up with here and here. Also on this slide here are these three parcels here, which are for municipal infill. And once again, they've been surrounded by the, by the town, and so we went ahead and made this municipal infill for there as well, anything like that.
What's the difference between NR and SFR?
Density.
Okay.
Density and a little bit of uses. And so for NR, if you are on the intersection of two major roads, you could do some, a little bit of a small commercial. But for the most part, in here it would be number of houses, the density that you could do. So the SFR would align more with your RSF 40s and 30s, and the NR would go with your RMXs.
And then potentially, as I mentioned, some intersections with the NC that you've got on your list there.
So they're recommending going from more houses per acre to fewer houses per acre.
Yeah.
To make it a little more rural to match with what's right there.
And so, so you have, okay, that's what's good. So you have a separate set of designations for the plan than you do for the zoning?
Yes. They align, they kind of, yes.
That's what keeps souping my head up, I can't keep up. So I'm looking for NR on the sheet. I got the copy of the cheat sheet and it's not on there.
It's not on there.
Okay.
I should get you a cheat sheet for the other ones, for the designations.
Well, but I think, in your mind, okay, you are so, I understand, but in your mind, you're so deep in this, when you see NR, you automatically think of the zoning codes that fit in that, right? And I think.
And you will too.
I think if we could get this cool sheet updated with?
Sure.
That designation?
We can do that.
We'd have another spot of the master key switch that helps us figure out the, what is it, the? Oh my goodness, the secret decoder ring we need to keep up with all this stuff. Like you used to get in the Crackerjack lives. I mean, I appreciate everything, and please don't misunderstand me. I am just, there's so many, the acronyms and are we in this or are we in that? And how do they blend together? And you play in this world, I'm sure I could throw some stuff from my world at you and you'd be like, whoa.
Yeah.
Well, jumping into this, just after a couple of months.
Yeah.
It's a lot. It's dripping from a fire hose at that point, so no, it's totally understandable.
Absolutely, absolutely. What were you saying?
Forget those, we're all exactly the same.
Is it possible to get the USB put on here too, so we could see just?
Sure, it's a good idea. Yeah.
I just, I mean, I'm not looking to move it, or, you know, I'm not, it's not, I just want to see how it fits in with a lot of this. And I'm sure it does, I'm sure it fits in well.
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah, it'll still align with what we're doing here as far as the USB goes. I don't think it's going to be any changes for that one. But yeah, I can add that to the map as well.
Because, you know, that's always a, it's always an issue.
What's the USB?
Urban Service.
It's the Urban Services Boundary, which is basically the boundary that they would consider bringing water and so around to.
Where they asked me last time, I didn't know what that was.
Yeah, that's a huge.
And essentially, kind of, it kind of runs, like from the Gaston County line, it goes around Clover, it tucks in here a little bit. It comes around, goes out, picks up York, kind of comes in through here, and then?
What's it again?
Goes in there.
Urban Service.
Okay.
And everything else over here is within that. And that's kind of what, you know, maybe a growth boundary or utility extension area. As we would want to be able to not extend utilities beyond that, that line.
Depends, like, I think in York you would be city.
Your annexation efforts, throw that out the window too, right?
The city, the, there's different.
But for the most part, it's really, it's recognized as where the cities are. All the cities are with urban.
Fort Mill.
So it's, it's pretty much where you see the rural residential and the city's area here.
Sure, but I'm saying when they finish that expansion down 901, that'll move the USB out, and you won't have anything to say about it. It's going to go out that far and you know where it is now. Is that, it's more of a designation than it is a plan?
Well, one of the, it's just a policy. It's a guideline. And one of the policies that we do have in the plan would be to work with the municipalities to see if we can come to some kind of agreement. So, because right now it's just aligned on the map. It has no authority whatsoever. And so, you know, and it goes into other areas utilities, so it covers Rock Hills, it covers Clover, and it, but it doesn't govern them. So we'd like to be able to have some kind of agreement where, hey, let's go here. But it's, it's up to them. If they want to extend their utilities, something we can do about it.
Right, right, I understand. I'm watching it happen down there.
Yeah. One thing I'll talk about too is, you know, we consider, when do you decide to go with municipal infill and when do you not? Because if this property here would ever be developed, anything higher, it would be utilities, the county can't service it, so it would be an exiled town. So, you know, we're areas where we're clearly surrounded by the town, those will be easy ones. But it's the ones that are like here that, well, essentially, if that was to develop, it would become Clover, not us.
Sure.
So we're leaving it as is because it's not totally surrounded right now by the town.
Because it's still kind of a boundary problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So now we're going to travel up further into Bowling Lane, which is this part of the county that goes over into Gaston County, comes up 321. And so that's 321 coming up through here. We made a few changes in this area right here. All this area here that's perfectly green, the comprehensive plan had that being on this side as being employment center all through here. And we just didn't see this as developing as a kind of employment center. Just did not see this is where jobs are going to be located up in this part of the county. And so we're recommending that one going to rural residential for this side over here. On this side of the county or the map, it was, I think it was single family. Yeah, single family through here, and we're making that as being rural residential. It's not going to be as high density as that, so we're saying rural residential for this one here. This here, the camp, the plan was saying for that for neighborhood residential. And so we're saying, no, let's bring that down some to single family residential, a little bit less dense than the neighborhood residential, which is not over here. So that one's coming down a little bit. On this side of the road, here's some current industrial uses through here. The school is over here, I believe. And this was in the county, the comprehensive plan is being employment center as well. And we didn't think this was going to be developing as employment center either. And we're recommending for here is single family residential, the section over here. Kind of to support the school going on over here as well. So there's kind of a lot going on in there. And there's a couple of other small useful infills throughout the section of the map here. So I've mentioned before that we've done a couple of changes to the employment center industrial categories. And one of them is to add regional employment center. And so this area here, this is the, this is Diamond Road, there's Campbell Road coming through here. The county owns a lot of land over here, there's a couple of other large landowners. It's currently zoned ID. But we feel as a, this could be a very nice location, or maybe even here as well, for a business technology park. Some kind of a business center here. So we're recommending this to go from being employment center to regional employment center to give more of a campus kind of development in this area right here. So those are the changes from there. Okay, so now we're sticking with the industrial categories. This section here is, here is the landfill. Here's Park Place, 324, this is where the county's landfill is right now. This right now is employment center. And we're recommending it goes to industrial. Because it's really, once again, we're talking about expanding that industrial category to be more than just the Catawba, Innuendi, and have it go to other areas as well. So that's what this is. So it's gone, it's still going to, it's still, it's already mostly developed, it's already zoned ID. It's kind of reflecting to have more of the, more of industrial sort of development here.
Where is that on the bigger map?
Um, right here. So this color right here is that right here. And so right now it's employment, and we're making it go to the darker purple. So that's industrial. So it's right in here on there. Like I said, that purple there, that's the landfill, is right there. Just kind of getting, must check.
The landfill was on Highway 5.
No, it's just.
What's on Highway 5, Sheriff's?
Well, it's, yeah.
Well, it's the access to it.
It's up there. Here's Highway 5.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking Highway 5 over here. Now, yeah, that's 5. There's the access road coming over here.
Okay.
So that's.
Eyes all turned around, okay, it's okay.
When Highway 5 comes down, Park Place goes this way here. This parcel here, this area here, right now the comprehensive plan says rural residential. So you're in between an existing industrial center here.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
And a landfill.
Yep.
And so we're recommending changing this to industrial as well. And that way it kind of limits any kind of residential growth that might happen in this section here. Because we wouldn't want to have them up against the landfill. There was a small change to this piece of property right here, once again, kind of to reflect what's already there. It was rural residential, we're going to single family residential, just going into the yellow color, this one right there.
So you're not recommending any buffer between industrial and rural residential then?
Um, yeah, you wouldn't have anything here. I think the county owns.
What I'm talking about on the eastern side?
Over on this side here?
Yeah.
Well, this is already built. This is already here.
Okay.
So we're just kind of reflecting the ID zone that's already in place. So, but we're not expanding it anything further in any other direction.
And that boundary line is a big creek.
Is there a creek through there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In addition to that, you might not have the natural transitions like you would with slightly increasing densities. But you do have literal buffer requirements for the industrial properties that are very deep and thickly wooded.
Is that, does that change based on what's around them, or is it just pure?
It does. Yep, so if you're, if you have an industrial property and your neighbor is also an industrial property, that buffer is very minimal. But if you are up against a residential property, it's at least 50 feet, if not more, depending on the size of your industrial.
Now we're traveling down to this part of the county. This area here, this is New Indy coming almost to Chester County. And along through here, the comprehensive plan currently says that as being employment center. And we're recommending changing it to industrial. There's a CXX rail line through here. Property here is currently already zoned ID. So once again, it's one of those ones, just kind of like matching it to what the current zone or actually is right now. So we're recommending making that one to industrial.
Hang on just a minute. This is real close to home. Let me look at that real quick. Okay. Is that any kind of industry can be in, in there if it's designated ID?
Um, well, it's.
So in other words, you got New Indies in the purple over here, right?
Yeah, it goes to about, about here. This is not New Indy, but that's, it kind of goes right through. I think that's.
And so if that other section over there become ID, that means they?
This currently is ID.
All of that shaded?
All this shown here is ID.
Yeah, like on Hall Spencer, like there was that steel factory, the steel manufacturer.
Yeah.
It was out that way, so it's, there's, there's already, a lot of times there's already, you know, buildings out there.
No, I, I realize that, I realize that. I'm just, so all of that, okay.
All that's currently.
It's already zoned that way.
Right, right. So if it came in, if it was, you know, vacant piece of property and wanted to do something, they wouldn't come to you because it already zoned properly for ID. They would just go through, develop the process through staff to do, and they would have to do the buffers and other requirements to do that.
I'm really surprised because where Harmony Road crosses Hall Spencer, right there, and then that chunk on the other side of the railroad tracks right there, that big chunk comes right there. Yep, that's a farm.
But that's rural residential. That's not zoned ID. This is.
I, I understand. I'm just surprised that you got, there's a huge cattle farm right there.
Some point along the time, it was zoned to that, whether it was that way to begin with.
I had no idea.
I don't know.
I'm surprised. I wonder if the farmer knows that.
I'm sure he knows his property's zoned ID.
Well, it's his neighbor's property.
No, no, it's his neighbor. That's what I'm saying. The farmer has that chunk that is right, was right there in the, okay, in between.
Just south of the ID.
And there's, you know, that, that's a quarter mile from my house. I drive by there just about every day and all the cows are there. I'm just really surprised. Okay.
Well, it's probably, you know, nothing happens down there, just, if he tried to.
I know, and nothing was going to happen until people saw Rock Hill decide to annex something, and now they're looking for a different zoning district, right? So it's just.
So now we're going to travel up 77, East Porter Road. And this is going to be increasing of the municipal infill areas. And so on the east, on the west side of 77, they've annexed quite a few through here. We're just going to go ahead and take those on this side, on the west side, but not the east side. We're just going to go ahead and at this point, make those here municipal infill.
What's the areas of purple?
This is I-77 and Core Employment.
Okay.
Yeah, to be honest, this is all here is the Rock Hill service area. Any of this vacant land here that gets developed is going to get developed in Rock Hill.
Okay.
But.
Didn't they just have a bunch of annexations?
Sure, yeah. They annexed a lot of this. That's pretty much all through here.
Okay.
And down it, this was annexed.
But the I-77 stuff, they haven't annexed yet?
Um, they annexed, they annexed some of it, but where you still see it's colored, it's still in the county.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yes. As they, this is Fire Tower Road, this was one of the annexations, one annexed all through here, that was all annexed recently. But yeah, as they, as they annex them, then I go in there and I remove the designation, I remove the zoning, I remove the ladies designation as well.
And as they've come down, they've created new donut holes, so that's what this is.
Kind of fill them in, yeah. And these are just some random others municipal infill. Little piece over here, well, start down here, also in Rock Hill, it's currently a single family. It's all surrounded by the town of Rocky Hill. Just go ahead and change that one over. And then along here, this is a Ford Mill, this is a US Foods, the, oh, forget the name of that place right there. And then a chemical company here. Once again, just go ahead and convert all those over to municipal infill. It's all surrounded by, by the town. Also in Fort Mill here, this is I-77 and Harris Road. The Fort Mill High School is right over here. There's a few parcels in here that are currently neighborhood residential. Go ahead and make that municipal infill. Over here, this is in the Greenway. There are still a few little small pieces of property within the Greenway itself in Fort Mill. Just go ahead and make those also municipal infill. So it's kind of cleaning up all those, the little donut holes.
What would go into municipal infill?
We refer to whatever the town wants to do.
Okay.
So essentially, like, like for instance, this one here, there's two houses right there, it'll never change. But if by some chance they want to demolish the houses, maybe go into the mall or something, I don't know, we'll refer them if they don't annex. Yeah, these are, this is a big old house there. So yeah, once again, this area here is just sort of filling in a few things, it's municipal infill. There's two more like that in TDK, Gold Hill Road. There's some areas here that could also go for municipal infill, surrounded by TDK, if they ever develop. This is Huber Graham that comes through here, so there's some vacant land over here that might eventually probably get developed in the town or the city of TDK. So we're just going to call it municipal infill.
Is it typically when, when someone comes in and they want to develop, is that when they look at annexing?
Yeah. So they contact us, and then we ask, you know, where they're located. If I were to see that, I would just pretty much say, you can just talk to TDK. Because if you want utilities, they'll get it from them, and so then we don't even, we don't even part of the equation. So they just go right to TDK. But if they wanted to do, you know, something large lot that didn't require any kind of utilities, and they wanted to stay in the county, and they didn't need that, then they could stay here. And they would look at their plan and say, what would they want to see there if they were to be annexed? And kind of look at that and try to make those work together.
It really comes down to utilities, because if they want a higher density of just one acre, and they don't have the utilities to do it, then they go to the city and they. and they don't have the utilities to do it, and they go to the city and they want to try and get that to happen. I'm sure we'll do that before you create the annex, you know, right?
Or they say, we don't want that, you know, we're not growing, so we don't want it, we don't want your use. And so, we're not gonna extend the utilities, you're not gonna get annexed.
And then, then they would be forced to do something less dense.
Or wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, just wait it out. And similar to here, this is Dam Road, also some areas in, in TDK area that we go ahead and switch those over to municipal infill. Okay. This is, um, Gold Hill Road, one sixty going to the state line, and here's Zor Road. We had a rezoning request recently. This is where the, um, the campers are located here. And this here, we had somebody who wanted to do a mixed-use development in this area here. We kind of call this like little, this little wedge area here. This road was wide in front of one sixty, so because of that, it's got all kinds of interest wanting to do something through there. Currently, the comprehensive plan shows it as being a single-family residential for this section right here. What we're recommending is this, this new designation, the transitional area here. And so, let's say somebody wanted to be able to do a couple of developments through here. A transitional area would say, we want to see you assemble some properties and maybe do some kind of small-scale development. But the key thing there is to assemble properties. That we don't want to have development coming in, just one here, one there, just along the road, but to be able to assemble them together and make them work cohesively. We included this area behind it, this is a really, really big parcel right here, because we'd like to see this parcel, if it ever gets developed, work with these and somehow some kind of interconnectivity area. This could be a good location for a nice mixed-use development to come in there. And if you have a combination of some commercials, some residential, to be able to utilize this location and, and just that amount of land. A lot of it is for sale right now. So, we would consider that as being a transitional area. The transition folks who've had a house sitting on these pieces of property for years that are ready to sell, but wanted to kind of come together and make it more of a cohesive development. So, that's what this area here is for.
What's that main road right there?
Zor Road.
Zor. Why isn't it go all the way? I mean, I know you kind of.
All the way down here or what?
No.
That's the state line.
Yeah. Yeah, but on the.
On this side here, this is a different, this is a little different.
No, but on the right picture.
This?
No.
Oh, over here?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll show you. Um, I, I, I only brought that in here just to kind of show you what the, there's a currently, there's a neighborhood, there's a, um, a node there. And just to kind of see how that node kind of is at the edge of that one there. Just to appeal from the, and also because of what's underneath here. And I wanted to show that as well.
Okay.
That's going to North Carolina.
Yeah, that gets to North Carolina.
Fort Mill, TK.
TK comes out this way, this is Gold Hill Road with a TK. That's one of the.
You got the Pet Boys and.
Yeah, Pet Boys is right here, right there.
So, if they're zoning and come in after this, it would be a much different discussion.
Yeah, 'cause right now, this whole thing here, single-family residential is what it is right now. And we don't think that's appropriate either.
You got some abandoned home homes.
There are some, yeah, yeah. And all this is for sale.
And that forces larger lots there, traffic there, rural.
It does, and it, it, the main thing is this access management part is come in together as a group to minimize the access onto, onto one sixty. And so, this new designation will kind of encourage folks to be able to do that. If you come in as a group, we would support that. It'll be something that is a larger, more cohesive development.
But if you go to neighborhood residential and they hit with neighborhood residential, even though they're on one of those smaller lots.
It's harder to be able to not support it.
Right, yes. Yeah, and that large parcel, that's Tiki Hills Farm, isn't it?
Tiki Hills Farm is right there. Actually, they're right there.
Is it where you got the, the Porter?
Mm-hmm.
What's the, is that zoning residential right now?
This is zone RUD. All through, oh, this, this whole wedge here is RUD right now. So, anything that's gonna come forward is gonna get rezoned. There's no, they're not gonna develop that RUD, too much money. So, we're trying to figure out a way to be able to encourage that to come in as a, some kind of a mixed-use development, something, considering, thinking holistically on this piece of property, if we can. You know, once again, we don't know what the market's gonna do.
I don't like that idea. My concern is just then, you know, you get one small piece comes in and, okay, well, that fits the plan, so.
Well, if it, one small piece would come in, it wouldn't fit the plan. No, because this, this, the part of that way it's written is that it's, it's the assemblage of property. We would not support it if it was just one. This is for us to be able to have something in there to help us support that one small parcel. Now, I'll show you some more examples here in a minute.
That would kind of, that would kind of put, that would kind of put development on hold in that area, in a sense.
It does. It, it does put the pressure on the developer to be able to work with the property owners to assemble property. It makes it a little more difficult.
So, there's a requirement for a recombination lots, basically?
The way it's written is that, um, to support this district for a rezoning, it needs to have assemblage of properties. And we don't say how many.
Right.
It may, what feels comfortable. We'll know what, what's a good project and what would, to go back. Well, we wouldn't support it if it wasn't enough, that's a vacant policy.
It's incentivizing them to collect, gather them up.
Yeah.
Sending the clear supplemental message.
Yeah, as long as that's a requirement in there, I can support it. But if that's not a requirement in there, then that's a.
Well, once again, it's, yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's a policy document. So, it, but it's the way we describe that in a way to, to gear it towards.
But if it's in there that says, if you want us to approve it, you need to do this, then we're more likely to recommend approval. Okay.
Right, right. So, we're recommending that you don't come back. If they could come in, we'd say, if we have this, we would say, no, you need to assemble some properties before we rezon that one.
I have a little bit more complicated question. Now, we're talking about this, it's great. I mean, I understand all of it, but then you get down to the nuts and bolts of it, and somebody comes in with something and everybody starts complaining, traffic, 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 traffic. Like, we're kind of pointing them away from less dense toward more dense now, toward more intensive uses. More dense and more, and I, I just, you know, like, I, I would love to know what to say to.
Well, and, and in addition to that is school load, right? So, then, once you go more dense.
I mean, that's part of it, yeah, that's part of it.
Second part of it, right?
I understand why, why we do it, because we, you know, we spoke about it, but I also now, just thinking about the next guy that comes in and traffic, 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 schools, schools.
Yeah, you go ahead to.
Yeah, it just, you know.
But if you did a mixed use and you had more business, especially being right there on one sixty, that's not gonna impact the school.
Right.
Other than give them more tax money.
Well, we want it to be a true mixed use, we'd include some residential. So, it would be where you have some residential to be able to benefit, be able to walk out and go to minimize traffic that way. You can all capture it right there. And so, you know, that's, we're gonna continue to, to recommend things that are good planning principles and see where it goes.
But this is one of those areas that's targeted for growth.
This is one we want to be able to, to be able to do our best to manage growth. We're trying to figure out a way to be able to manage the growth. And I think this tool will help us to do that.
Yeah, and I understand that the assemblage of properties is part of that, that's, I.
It allows, you know, the county to not settle for smaller rezonings that might come in. Say, I want to do one office. You know, well, maybe we don't need to go ahead and rezone and change the land, you know, use of this area just for that and kind of trickle in one at a time, and all of a sudden, we have twenty new curb cuts on one sixty right at that brand-new traffic light at Zor Road. Rather, instead, someone comes in with a whole couple hundred acres, they're gonna do a nice unified development, they're gonna have one entrance on one sixty, one on Zor. They're gonna have properties that you can walk to and, like, go down from my apartment, go to a Chipotle, something like that. So, you're reducing those trips and the impact while it's more dense, it's not as felt in the community as it would if it were a disjointed one.
I get it, but if you put apartments there, we're all gonna get killed. I'm just saying, they're coming after us.
Yeah, and.
It's love curb cuts.
When I think of, I'm sorry, when I, when I think of mixed use, I think of stuff like further down on one si, what is it called? River?
Kingsley.
Kingsley?
I'm not too sure where you're going.
Maybe.
Riverwalk?
Huh?
Riverwalk?
No, no, it's, it's, it's in the Fort Mill, just before you're getting up to this edge of the state line. There are, there's like strip mall businesses.
Here in North Carolina?
No, here in South Carolina.
Where the Walmart is?
Sixty.
Huh?
Like, where the Walmart is?
No, no, further, it has been so long. There's a pizza joint right there. Right, you know, this is how we do stuff in the South. We don't know street names, it's where things used to be and where you eat and stuff like that. But there's, there's a pizza place, it's like a little bit up from where the Ross is, and on the other side.
You're on the.
On the other side of the.
Your cross is over here, yeah. You're talking Ross, you're talking.
That, thank you, I'm sorry, okay. So, I'm on the wrong road, but I'm.
You're on the wrong road.
I'm thinking Regent Park, where they have businesses and then kind of behind that is residential.
I don't think she's gotten to Regent Park yet.
No, I'm not, but what I'm saying, when you, when you think about mixed use, is that something that would fall into mixed use? That if you have businesses along Zor and along one sixty there, but that chunk behind it towards the state line was all residential, would that be considered mixed use?
So, what we would consider a mixed use is a mixture of uses. And so, imagine a development that has both retail, office, residential, a mixture of uses, within one development. And therefore, people can go and they can live there, they might work there, they can shop there, they can eat there. That's a mixture of uses in that one. And by doing that, you're able to capture trips, because you're all gonna be internally. So, you're gonna go home, you're gonna, you know, put your dog out, you're gonna go get something to drink, you're gonna go to your grocery store, and you can do all that without having to go on the main road. So, that is a mixture of uses. And you can't have the entire county mixture of uses, because we couldn't support that. But you want to find locations where you have a good amount of land available to be able to put it together and build it like that. This is an opportunity here.
So, kind of more like Baxter?
Here. Baxter is traditionally a good development, so, yeah, it's a large development like that. That's why I mentioned Kingsley. Kingsley is a development that has office, it has residential, and it has dining establishments.
Where is Kingsley?
Kingsley is at one sixty, I recommend you go there.
And, yeah, I'm sure I'm trying to visualize.
I seventy-seven, one sixty.
I don't know if you have, you wanna, I don't know, that'd be an idea to put something there like Kingsley.
Well, you wouldn't have that, but, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, it's a big piece of land there to do something with it.
Yeah, we'd have folks screaming around anyway.
That's why I said, you put apartments there or high-density housing.
Yeah, 'cause Kingsley got apartments in there.
That's already a mess. I'm there all the time.
We've already had an issue with townhomes.
Yeah. I don't know.
Yeah.
Anyway, go ahead.
That, that's why I was trying to understand a little bit more about what mixed use is, because like you said, to the extent there's more retail there and you're not affecting the schools, and it's convenient, great.
Right, I'm, I'm much better with retail there than apartments or high-density.
Probably more retail business than probably residential.
Then it would just be a mixture, it would be a mixed use, because you're still going to one use. It would just be retail or restaurants or whatever, and you wouldn't be able to have any kind of.
And I love the mixed use, I like a lot of those mixed use areas, but right there with the traffic, and then you see what Kingsley has done to traffic and those other areas, I mean, you are gonna get vilified.
And how is it zoned today?
It's RUD.
RUD, one-acre lots.
Well, there's some, actually, there is some right here, that's U D. There's the, the guy that has this.
But is, is all that right now just open property?
Um, it's for sale, this, there's a house here, there's a house there, these are all pretty much vacant.
There's little Tika Hills Farm, which has like microgreens.
They're under, I would say, underdeveloped.
Yeah.
So, you can do a lot with this potential there, and it's all for sale, so.
I mean, to, to have that, that section developed as a, a retail one-stop-on-the-way-home, that would have multiple different options for you in the same place, maybe that's the way we get there without.
The high-density housing component.
That would get us all in trouble.
Yes, it would.
So, how would, how would that look? What, what part of the alphabet soup would we pick to fit?
If they came in here, um, it'd be a mixed-use development as a special district. That would be like the best way to do that.
But that includes the high-density housing.
Doesn't require, it doesn't require residential in the mixed-use district?
It does.
It does.
It doesn't require, uh. You have a certain, you have a certain maximum of single-family that you can have.
We're looking for mixed retails, what we're looking for, where, what, how does that get designated, right?
GC, dental commercial, have at it.
You know?
That's all that is.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, to be able to stop by and get your prescription and pick up something to eat and, you know.
Or neighborhood residential, because that allows that type of business, doesn't it? With slightly smaller lots.
Would do it as well. Neighborhood residential would be residential properties.
Only resi, I thought neighborhood residential, you could do some small commercial.
If you were gonna go commercial, we'd just go NC and just get the whole.
Neighborhood commercial and keep it down.
I mean, when I'm, when I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking about the mall outside, right? The malls are dead, but it's pretty much what we're talking about is the mall outside. And I go one place and hit five or six different places and different things I want, and then.
Well, you've got Rivlegate, it's just.
Up the road.
Just up the road.
Yeah, you've got Target just up the road to the door, and Walmart's just to the south.
Already in the area. So, it has to somehow differentiate itself from what, the Target one, that's more of the big box, you know, you've got Target and Home Depot and everything up there at Rivagate. So, a smaller, smaller sort of.
Or even medical office, med.
Yes, yeah.
So, then, the transitional areas, they could be a little more flexible, right? Because they're really looking for that, those consolidation of multiple parcels into a bigger project. It wouldn't necessarily have to be exclusively reselling to MU, right? If that, if we were to consider recommendations.
Yeah, that is true. Um, because there are some areas where you might want to, if it's a smaller thing, maybe you can go to NC and do the uses that are allowed in the NC. OI perhaps, if you wanted to do more. If it was smaller and you wanted to go more medical office, that kind of a thing, you could do that. This one's such a big piece of property, I think you'd have to go to something that could, at least NC, to be able to allow you to get the use you would want to have to make it sustainable.
We would say it would probably be best utilized if someone bought the whole wedge and, and did a big mixed-use district.
What does?
But that not, might not happen.
What does restaurant normally need to fall under, GC?
Uh, it can go as small as NC, depending upon the size of it. You can do some smaller restaurants in NC.
Neighborhood commercial?
Neighborhood commercial.
So, it's, okay, and then neighborhood, when it's neighborhood commercial, that still doesn't mean you can put houses or residential, it just means commercial with a neighborhood feel to it.
Smaller scale, yeah, serving the local neighborhoods as opposed to being a regional one in GC.
That seems to make more sense to me than mixed use that could have residential in there.
Would have to have residential in there.
That, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Using NC or GC would be more along what I think all of us are saying than mixed use would. Yes? Am I getting this right or no?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, help me out.
Yeah, 'cause it's the high density, I think it's the high-density house. I don't think that the housing necessarily is a problem there. I think it's your high-density apartments, condos.
You can do a, a small amount of single-family detached in a mixed-use development. A small percentage of that can be that way.
Right, but it's a small percentage of it, it's, you still have to have the high-density component, don't you?
No, no, you would just have, that could be, you don't have to have apartments or townhomes. You have to have some residential component, and it can be single-family. But it would be less because of the fact that single-family takes up so much land compared to a apartment or townhome. but it would be less because of the fact that single family takes up so much land compared to a apartment or townhome. So it's, the way it's written, it's a certain percentage of the entire area. If you're single family, can be the single family use, because we still want to make sure we're getting some commercial too.
So if you were to do that as mixed use with the requirement that the residential portion be single family, yeah, if that was part of the requirement, then I think we could probably get behind it a little more than if it was just mixed use, period.
You understand what we're worried about, right?
I know what you're worried about.
Okay. And we don't want to, we, we don't want to get into more, um, difficult territory where our hands are tied, that we really all don't want to see that happen, but there's nothing to keep it from happening because of how it got designated.
Sure, and the beauty of the mixed use development is it's a negotiation between council staff, funding commission, and so you can work all those things out. So you can really get in there and you actually, instead of getting a, a bubble plan, you can get a site plan to say, we want it to function like this. We have a lot more authority if you go with that district, as if you went to N C, it's they can do whatever the ordinance allows them to do. If you go for a mixed use development, that's when we have the authority and we have the negotiation ability to get what we really want to see there. So there's benefits in that mixed use district.
Do we have evidence that in, in mixed use that it actually does cut down on traffic, like? Because, I mean, you're talking about Kingsley and those, and how the traffic, I'm not familiar with it, but I'm, that's what I'm trying to one, like, figure out, because I know it's a good idea, it's kind of like the, the public transit idea that everybody wants everyone else to use it, but nobody wants to actually use it.
Right. So, yeah, there is, um, a capture rate that they would do for the, in the I T E manual that says if you have apartments here and, and, um, restaurants, whatever, that they'll cap them internally. So yeah, there is evidence and documentation and numbers to actually determine how many are actually captured within the development and not leaving.
Not leaving.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, you're going to have to go sometime. Um, but you are going to have a lot of internal capture by having this, this district there. Yeah, and that, that's why they, they function really well is because you can, especially for a big, younger crowd that wants to, you know, build somewhere, walk there and come back, and it's all right there.
Diane, you know, and I'm one of those people that have to fight with Kingsley every single day. Does, it captures the internally, does it capture all the people trying to get to Kingsley? Trying to get to Baxter?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's true, there is, um, they do draw traffic as well. So they're definitely bringing in traffic to go there, so you have to deal with that as well.
And I, I, maybe I didn't ask my question more clearly. Does what it capture offset what comes?
Not one for one, absolutely no way. No, but it does, it does have some internal capture.
Especially rush hour, because most of the people living in there are not working in there. They'll shop in there, they'll dine in there, but rush hour there.
There's a lot of folks that actually, no, they work there. L P L and Lash, very, very large employment centers right there, so there are a lot of folks who do, who do work there. But a lot of people are coming there.
Well, they have to bus them in, don't they? So, don't they have to park off, off site sometimes?
Sometimes they, they park across the road.
Across the street.
They park across the street, they own that one as well.
Where the old bower was.
Yeah, they bring them across, there's a little shuttle bus that goes back and forth.
So that's a lot of fun.
That's what I was wondering if we're creating more problems, like we're trying to mitigate problems, but we're also creating.
That's the whole, that's the whole idea behind mixed use is that these uses are going to go somewhere. Someone wants to establish a business, someone wants to have a corporate headquarters, and how do we best, uh, design those in our community so that they have the least amount of impact? And the consensus in the planning community is bunch them all together. Because if you spread them out, not only are we doing more trips, because I've got to go to the bank over here, I've got to go to grab my lunch over here, I'm going to do my dry cleaning over here, and then I got to go home after. Where you bunch those together, you can kind of do a couple of those at the same time. But now my distance is longer as well, so not only are we creating more trips, but my trips are longer.
Congestion in one area as opposed to all.
So size wise, because we keep talking about Kingsley, is that about the same size, smaller or larger?
This is smaller.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
So, because I'm not seeing something like an L P L doing a headquarters here, it doesn't seem big enough.
There, but you also, you know, it's all roads, two lane roads, so you don't, it isn't quite as, you wouldn't have quite the intensity.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not seeing a good employment.
You'd still have some there.
You'd have some businesses, but I don't see the people who have a high density housing there going to work there.
Right. I mean, just in the space that was right for that, that one, for this piece of property right here that they came in for the rezoning, they wanted to put, um, like eighteen thousand medical office, I think maybe twelve or fifteen thousand square feet of, of retail, just in that small piece right there. You know, that, that compared to the rest of the whole property here, proportionally, it's kind of give you a feel for what else could actually go on there. I just want to highlight one area over here that was single family, being switched to neighborhood residential to match what's currently there. That's all that was. Think we can move on? Okay. Staying with the whole transitional area, I wanted to show you a couple of different areas where we're also making that change. Um, this is Pleasant Road, uh, Colthorpe Road over here. Remember, we had a rezoning request, I think you came forward?
Yep.
Um, the hotel is here, this come down here, over here is Baxter. This is a road here of really nice, single family homes, I think there might be a church here. Um, so they might eventually want to sell, and they want to come in for rezoning to do individual things. This is one that we would think it would be best if we could bring them all together and do some kind of a couple, two, three, whatever, try to combine them together and then have them rezoned as a group in this transitional area. Whether it could be an office, um, it could be some small daycares could go through there. And then we're also kind of bringing in that one as well, just to kind of make that whole section that way. But that's an example of where it's smaller pieces that could do that.
Going up Pleasant, what's on the right, right there?
Over here?
No, up where you were, transitional piece, transitional.
Transitional piece, that's vacant, right?
That's vacant land, yeah, that's that corner right there where the light is, that's just a vacant land right now. They tried to get it rezoned for a hotel. Yeah. So that's an example of where, so see smaller pieces of land, you'd be able to transfer, just to transition over.
That wouldn't be suitable for hoteling in the new transitional.
No, no, that wouldn't be. Small daycare, something small office kind of thing, you'd kind of go there as well.
That's like close to 160, right?
Yep.
160 is down here.
Yeah, so like the, was that the Walgreens?
Um, this is, Walgreens over here, this is a hu-, new hotel is put in here.
Cambria.
Can't, no, Cambria's over here, that's, um, I don't know which one that one is.
Cambria's for the, for the 160, yeah.
Yeah. I forget, there's been so many of them. And here's another one that we've identified as an area for that one. This is Gold Hill Road, um, over here is 77, over here is, uh, 160. This is what I call the hump. And this is, once again, these are just small lots right through here, single family homes on there. And they get calls frequently wanting to be able to resort it over to a commercial. And we've said, no, you've got to come in as a group because we don't want to have just, you know, one cut, one cut, one cut, but come in together as some kind of holistic area here. So this is an area that we've identified for the transitions through here. And there's a couple more, but I haven't counted yet, so I haven't gotten them.
77's on the right hand side.
77's over here, so.
Gold Hill.
Is that Eppington?
This is Gold, um.
Yeah, that's it, right there.
Is that Eppington across from that?
I'm almost positive.
This is, um.
Gold Hill Commons?
Gold Hill Commons, you know, the restricted housing neighborhood is right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, and this is where they just built that, um, daycare is right there.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And how does, what does transitional area translate into zoning wise?
It could be a different, a variety of different things. So the way we have it written here right now, what you could do there for land uses, a single family attached, office medical use, which could be maybe an O I, um, child or adult daycare, assisted living. Those are some general kind of uses that could go into that, that category. Maybe other ones as well, but that's sort of what could go there. So like I said, it could be an O I. If you get single family attached, um, you could do some townhouses there. Um, please don't kill me. And then, or maybe some kind of, uh, you know, residential office or commercial through it, just, but something very small scale. But the main, the main purpose of this is to bring them all together and do it together, not just piece by piece. All right. That was all of that. So I have one more thing I'd like to cover.
About how much longer do you think, just in general?
Um, I could probably do this next thing in about fifteen minutes.
Okay, I was just going to see if anybody needed a bathroom.
Break, whatever.
Fifteen minutes, it should be good.
You can.
Can you take one and pass them along, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
How is that in the same time?
Oh, I can have you when I can, that's really sad. So can you go to that?
Oh, dear.
It's a second. No, no, yeah, take it right.
People have passed up all the way. Can, since we're taking each break, would you mind going back to that section that, on your slide that was down on Hall Spencer Road? Sorry. So.
Thank you.
Again, this is very, um, selfish saying, sorry, but I am, I am not very far from that. And when I think about industrial, I think of things like New Indian, I definitely have a not in my backyard syndrome tied with that. So I have some heartburn doing this that would send a signal that more of that kind of use is there, even though it's zoned I B. I personally, this is me talking, just me as a, as a resident of that area, I would rather see it zoned some other way that's gonna, yeah, sure, it's zoned I B, and if you come in and do something, I can't do anything about it because that's how it is now, but, um, I don't know if, and Diane, I don't know if you remember, you and I met a long time ago.
Oh, gosh.
Okay?
Sorry to erase it.
No, this is, this is all right. You and I met a long time ago, about three or four years ago, when I recognized that where I live out there, I'm actually in a planned development that's got an H O A. I don't know if you remember this conversation from forever ago, but you're, if you'll take your pointer and come down, come down Harmony on the other side of Hall Spencer, come south and there, right there, and come down, that's Pitts Road.
Oh, yeah.
And everything that you see down in there, all of that is in an H O A. In the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
And it was zoned P D. And you said, we would never do that today.
Exactly.
Right? So if we look at that, would we ever be designated in those spots of property as I D today if somebody was asking to zone them that way? With all that A G C around it?
The only thing.
Or R U D.
Only thing, there is a rail line through there.
Understood.
Right, and that would be the only thing I would want to consider was the fact there's a rail line through there.
Understood.
And then that, you know, it really depends upon what else is there. So if they came in, and if this was all just R U D, all zoned A G C, we'd probably would pause a long time before we would even consider that. We'd have to think about that. That would not be an easy sell, because if there was no other factor that led us to go to I D, then you're right, we probably wouldn't support that, because rail lines can go through countryside. So it would really depend upon, it might be unlikely that we would consider that in the future to zone that way.
Right, and so what I'm asking is, by making this change, in my mind, it appears that we're validating something that we wouldn't necessarily do today and might be sending the wrong message to whomever might want to develop there. You know, if you want to put a different kind of industry there, maybe okay, or a different kind of business, if you will, but to bring in, uh, I don't know, some, some manufacturing place that, oh, we're close to railroad, that's great, and it's twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and the people out there, their quality of life changes because it was zoned that way. I just, I have some personal concern, I'm trying to, I'm trying to not be a commissioner.
That's a very good point.
And I, I have a little bit of heartburn with that, and, and especially because there's not a lot of sightings built. There is a siding down there off the railroad for the steel plugs, okay? But the rest of that is just mainline railroad through there from point A to point B. So there would have to be a lot of other construction done for there to be benefits of having rail. Right? And I would personally, living down there, like to see, hey, do some employment, but maybe not heavy industry down there.
Right, right.
So.
It's a valid point, and I think we'll, we should consider that.
I, thank you.
Yes.
Because we, we enjoy the train going by, and, and sometimes it's how we know how to set our clock to, to fifteen A M, you know? And that's okay.
I feel you.
Huh? No?
I like the train.
It's okay, isn't it a lie?
I do too, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that facetiously, but me personally, if I'm up there, if I'm up that late doing something for whatever, I'm a night owl, I'm not an early morning person, I'm a night owl.
It's all that coffee you drink.
Huh?
It's all that coffee you drink.
It doesn't matter, it makes no difference. I drink coffee all day long, I've been doing it since I was in college, and it makes no difference. I just do not function in the morning, but by about nine o'clock, everything's firing, and yet I go to two o'clock in the morning with no problem, and the train go by, and it's great. Anyway.
Okay.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Sure, sure, thank you for that thought, just good. So, um, the last portion that I want to talk about this evening as far as Landy's plan are the nodes. And you should be familiar with the nodes, and there are these, um, these little circles throughout the county, and they're located at, at an intersection of two roads. And the intention was, it's either a town center, community center, neighborhood center, rural center, village center, all based upon scale. The way we do it, and we've done in the past many, many years, is we put that pinpoint down and we draw a circle. And all community centers are the same size, and town centers, and they're all the same size on this circle. But in, but in reality, we know that's not really how it is. So one thing we're doing is we're, is I've modified the shapes of the nodes to better reflect the actual development pattern. So it's no longer going to be one circle, it's going to be these like, sort of amoeba-like kind of shapes throughout there. It pretty much covered, and it's not partial specific, it covers the majority of the area with a little bit of potential growth, and we'll, we'll zoom into some different areas here to kind of look at that, um, to be able to make it reflect what the actual use is, what's going on there. That's one part of the node changes. We've recommended to remove four of the nodes. Um, I think two of them, it was two of them, and there's a, there's a sheet to kind of go along with that to know what we're doing, what we're thinking about, how we thought about this. Um, were because they were surrounded by municipalities, and so we have no influence on them, it's all going to be developed from the towns. Um, one of them was located in an area that really just didn't make sense, that was a little bit supported by the development growth or pattern. And there was one more, and I cannot remember which one it was, but it's written down. And then the final major change was at Carolins, when you come down 77, this is a community center node, and nothing there is a community center that supports that. So what we're recommending is to develop a new node that's called the gateway node. That will signify when you come into here, and we haven't written it yet, so I'm still trying to figure what it's going to be, um, but to be able to have it more of a, have uses and regulations and recommendations or regulations based upon at the gateway into the county. So we'll make that change to that node right there, right at Carolins. So I've given everybody a map, and we're not going to go through all twenty-four, I think, nodes, um, but you can have that and have an idea as to what we're changing. But I, I do have a couple of snips here to be able to kind of show you what I'm talking about. So for instance, here's the node at Five Points. And here is the existing node, you can see that dark color around it. What we're recommending doing is change it more like this. And this is really a better reflection of how that node actually functions. And it, it does come into some of the neighborhood here, and I'll, I'm going to go back in there and smooth these out and make this a little bit softer angles and stuff, corners, but just to kind of give you an idea as to, as to what it's gathering. And this is all developing here, is the tractor supply is up here. Here's some vacant land that's already zoned, G C was the node. So this will all eventually develop in some kind of commercial, but here's the, the, the node is going to be like this now. This one's up here at Bowling Green, we're up here before. And it's the rural center, it's currently like this area here, but we're changing it to make it reflect more like this. This is really much how that, how that node functions, is more in this pattern right there. So we're going to make that change to that. And then this, of course, was the, um, the Carolins, we're going to make that, this is not a community center. Um, just not too sure yet, we're going to do with it, how we're going to define that one. But we're going to change that to a community center.
So what, what is a node again?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So a node. Are there going to be more fireworks places allowed?
No.
I'm just asking, I mean, is that what is going to happen?
Yeah, we'll have to figure out how it's going to look, but the way we're doing right now for our, this is kind of giving you a picture of what comprehensive plan has, uh, right now, within the plan itself, it talks about each land use designation, and it gives a description of what it is. So we're making that a little bit more, more helpful. And so in that, we'll have character, uses, building topology, to kind of be able to explain what happens within that land use designation. And so I'll develop this to whatever I want, we want to show for, for Carolin. So we'll figure out what those uses should be, any kind of, um, certain character, anything like that. So we'll, we'll do that same sort of thing for that node, we just haven't got it yet.
So each one of these nodes may have a different type of.
Yes, each node functions.
Vision for what it should look like.
Yes, each one functions differently. So right now, it's, it's, and you can see that scale. So if you're looking at your map that I've sent, showed you, you know, the, the bigger the node, the more intense they are. So when the, the node is, is bigger, more stuff can happen there. As it gets smaller, fewer things can happen. So that's how, that's how the system is right now. It goes from a, from a town center to community center, neighborhood center to rural center.
And what do the nodes do for you, why identify?
They're used for when we come for, like, for rezonings. And typically for commercial, maybe for some higher-density department developments could go in those nodes, but that's for the rezoning. So you wanna be, if you're gonna do a commercial development, you wanna be in, within that node.
All right, let me see if I've heard this correctly then. So a node defines a comprehensive plan within the comprehensive plan.
The node.
It's like a layer on top.
Layer on top of it.
I mean, it's, it's like, we have this comprehensive plan, however, you are in node twenty-four, which.
Right.
Now we have this type of stuff, okay.
So here.
Okay.
This is.
Just getting a little more specific in these key areas.
Right, so here is an example of a node laid on top of other designations. And so here is, it's neighborhood residential all through here, single-family, but you're also within a node. So it kinda has.
To your point, everything north of the sore road there is gonna have a fireworks.
No, that's not.
Pull your slide back.
I know.
But this is the Carolin zone, so that's what we were talking about, yes, it was, see that?
Now that one is, but not the sore road, it's not the Carolins.
What's the C C mean, that wasn't Carolin?
Community center, we have multiple nodes, we have multiple locations of the same node.
I need page twenty-seven, I have the cheat sheet, secret decoder ring.
I'm gonna change it.
We basically have six, we have six types of nodes.
Town center, four, five.
Feel like I have a.
We have five.
H T M L web page here.
We have five nodes.
So look, we have those five types, and they are distributing amongst the twenty-four locations.
So the C C didn't have anything to do with the other picture, it was community center?
I was just showing how it was layered on top of something else.
Okay.
Yep, that was the intention for that.
Okay, so it's not fireworks and more alcohol places, is that like twice as many?
Either A, B, C, or fireworks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Self storage, a lot of self storage.
And they're really meant to serve as an additional, uh, and that point of analysis for staff and planning, commissioning, council to consider. So if you have a rural residential designation, we know what that means, and what that should look like zoning-wise, well, what if it's also in a rural center node, then it should look a little bit different than that. So it kinda adds an extra layer of analysis.
It's kinda telling us, it's like, that's a significant spot. Okay.
Yeah.
Need a, need a note sheet.
Note sheet? That's what she, note sheet.
That's what this is. Yeah, no.
Just want to tell you what it is, though.
Okay.
But we have, well, it's all gonna change anyway, so, no, don't worry too much.
That's right.
So that's all I have for the nodes.
What is this one out by itself that didn't get a number, is that just?
No, that one, it's supposed to be gone.
It's supposed to be.
It should be, that was, used to be an old T C node from, um, uh, back when that was, before we had the town and then preserve. And it somehow didn't get taken off that map.